It's eight thirty. I'll call this morning's meeting to order. Looking for an approval of the agenda.
Move approval.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Citizens to be heard. Is there anyone wishing to speak on anything not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move into the approval of payment of bills and vouchers.
Move approval.
We have a motion to approve is presented.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. The minutes, March twenty-seventh, are included. We have a motion to approve and a second. Any further discussion on the minutes? All those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Alright, Rhonda. Annual Social Services Department update. Good morning.
Good morning. Okay, I'm hoping the PowerPoint did go out in the packet. Yes, okay. I wasn't planning to do the overhead, maybe just go from the PowerPoint. Get my glasses ready. Okay, so I have kind of followed a format that I have done similarly in the past. Normally, the seven supervisors I have periodically throughout the year, I will have them come to talk a little bit more in detail about their particular service areas. So today, I'm just going to give a little bit of an overview of those service areas and then we will plan for future presentations with those supervisors. So, just to update you on our organizational chart, that's the first slide there. You can see all the employees that we have. We have one hundred and sixteen full-time employees. We also, in the social service budget, we do pay for five full-time employees in the auditor's office. They're not listed on this, but they do come under our budget and they're paid for out of our, out of our areas. So, you'll see Quinn Jaeger is the first column there on the left. He is our newest supervisor. He replaced Stacy Christensen in our Child Protection Assessment Unit. And then we have Amy, who does ongoing child protection. Pat is our Adult Services Supervisor, so she's chemical health, adult protection, adult mental health, those areas. Holly supervises our Disability Service Areas. And then we have Larry Young, who is our Income Maintenance Supervisor, Sandy Thorne, our Child Support Fraud and Collections. And then we have all of our Office Support Staff, who is supervised by Diane Cook. And you can see in the, under Pat Boyer, we only have one open position right now that we have yet to fill. So that is awesome. Normally, we see a little bit more red open positions, but we will finally be full staff. However, we do have retirement coming up in May and then another one in, that's in Larry's unit. And you have already approved to fill that position. And we will have another retirement coming up in October, also in Larry's unit. So we will have some retirements coming up over the next year or two as well. So, any questions about our staffing?
Any questions?
Okay. Okay, so the next slide is just to give you a little bit of information about those particular units. So, are, you've heard over, over the years, a little bit about our Child Protection Unit supervised by Quinn. The primary work in that unit is mostly all of the upfront work. So if an individual calls our agency and they want to make a child protection report, it comes into this unit. If we have a parent that's calling, struggling with parent-child issues, truancy issues. We get a lot of phone calls, maybe separated or divorced families, where we get parent, parent conflict issues between custodial parent and non-custodial parent. All those calls come into this particular unit. And then they screen those assessments and decide what track it goes to. Or we make referrals to other providers outside of our agency, so depending on the nature of that situation.
Do you want to expand a little bit, just because of recent events, what tracks? When you say how we kind of shuffle through, what comes through?
Yeah, right.
Can you kind of clarify what tracks is on?
Sure. So, in terms of child protection, we, we are quite heavily mandated in terms of how we screen reports that come into our agency. And they basically can go one of two tracks in terms of child protection. The first one being a more formal investigative track, where we make a finding if, if a child was maltreated, maltreated, and who maltreated the child. And we make a finding about whether protective services are needed. So this would be non-voluntary. It's, we're there, we got a report, we're coming in, we're doing an investigation. Most of those involve work with law enforcement. So sexual abuse reports that we get always take an investigative track. Significant physical abuse situations where you have marks, bruises, that kind of stuff, some significant neglect. The state has, gosh, I want to say probably, a forty-page document that our staff follow when they make a screening decision. The other thing is periodically, the state will go into our system and look at how we're screening reports. They'll look at actual intakes that we got. And they'll give us a call if they think we, we screened a report in, in a way that they would disagree with. Then they will also call us on reports. They'll say, yep, you, you made the right decision. We frequently call Department of Human Services if we're not sure to get guidance. We also will call the County Attorney's Office quite frequently as well. Because these are not black and white situations. They're all unique. So, so that's, that's the one track. The, the second track is maybe we get a report of, maybe a child's unsupervised. Maybe the house, we get a report that the house is not safe for children. So depending on a number of factors, if we've had a report on the family in the past, if there's other issues going on, we may screen it in and call, it's called a family assessment. So it's still mandatory. We're out there, we're assessing the situation. But we don't necessarily make a finding on the parent, a formal finding that says, you neglected your child. We do make a finding on whether services are needed and we hope that they will work with us on a voluntary basis. So that's, that's the second track. And then we have multiple other tracks that are lower-level voluntary involvement beyond that. So, this, this service area is heavily driven by statute and rule in terms of how we respond, when we respond. We have timeframes to respond within, depending on the nature of the report, we need to respond within twenty-four hours, immediately in some situations. And then we have timeframes with which to complete assessments and so. So, this unit also will do things like, if we get a report that requires immediate attention, they will also file orders for immediate custody through the County Attorney's Office when we maybe have to take custody of a child immediately and things like that. So in 2017, we had twenty, over twenty-six hundred intakes come into this unit, so all kinds of calls. Of those intakes, many of them, we can defer out, we can screen them in in different ways. But we did conduct three hundred and ninety formal child protection assessments involving five hundred and sixty-seven kids. We completed one hundred and fifty-eight child welfare assessments and made referrals for one hundred and sixty-six, what we call P-SOP referrals. So P-SOP stands for Parent Support Outreach Program. And it's a grant that counties in the state of Minnesota get to help serve families when they first enter the system as a prevention, which is really what we want. We want to prevent kids and families from coming deeper into our non, non-voluntary services. So we work with the Village Family Service Center and our hope is that we can engage families early when there's some risk factors. Young kids, maybe families that are struggling in terms of making ends meet. Maybe kids in the family have some mental health issues, so we try to intervene early and get them hooked up to services, so. So that's our Child Protection Unit. There's been some tragedies recently and, oh, I think over the last, well, you know, over the last three to five years, that particular service area has been under a lot of scrutiny, as it should be, if those are critical service areas. And hopefully, it does get the attention of our state to help counties be able to have adequate resources to address those needs as well, so.
Is there other agencies too around the county that, I mean, like in Moorehead, that do some of this stuff too, or?
Not in terms of the mandated investigative response. But we do have contracts with various providers that help us serve our families in the child protection system. So we have contracts with Lutheran Social Services, the village. We have funds going to reach that also help in terms of the service delivery. Rainbow Bridge is another example. Many of the families that are involved in our child protection system, we work with Rainbow Bridge. But there isn't an agency that has a statutory mandate like we do in terms of how we have to respond and where reports go to for child protection.
Well, do some go to those agencies first, or do they go to us first?
No, some of them certainly go to those agencies first, and that's what we would hope. So when a family calls, if it's not a child protection report, we will often talk with them about what are the issues, refer them to our community providers. Rape and Abuse Crisis Center is another entity that we often refer to, especially in domestic violence situations and things like that. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, the second area is also child protection, but that's what we call our ongoing unit. And for situations where families are coming into our system, we, for example, complete a child protection assessment. If the, if the risk factors are high based on an assessment that we do, the cases refer to our ongoing unit for longer-term case management services, so we can follow the case along. Kids that go into auto home placement, most of all of those cases go into our ongoing unit. And so this is longer-term case management in those situations. So, when we've talked a lot about auto home placements, almost all of those cases are managed long-term by this particular service area. So last year, they served one hundred and sixty-one families with the child protection case management, which, when we determine that there's a need for child protection case management, most often, it's, it's not in a voluntary fashion. Sometimes families will voluntarily work with us, but most often, it seems we have court orders, what we call child in need of protection petitions within the court. So the court becomes involved and there's a lot of oversight by the court, guardian ad litem's, our office, and it can be a multitude of people involved. We provided eighty-nine families with child welfare case management and we had two hundred and thirty-five unduplicated kids in auto home placements. So that's down from twenty sixteen, we had two hundred and ninety unduplicated kids in auto home placements. So twenty seventeen, we did see a reduction, which is, which is good. This particular unit also, and the supervisor supervises all of our licensing programs. So we license family daycare homes, we license foster homes, we license corporate foster homes and adults, for both adults and children. So you can see the numbers down there of how many licensed family daycare homes we have in our county. We have one hundred and fifty-six homes. That's down a bit from, from previous years. Our staff, we have two licensers that continue to try to work in our community to increase that capacity for licensed providers. We have twenty-two homes that are what we call legally non-licensed. So that would be, maybe you identify a neighbor that you want to take care of your children. And I'm a recipient of a basic sliding fee childcare. So that requires my provider to be what's called legally non-licensed, if they're only providing for my children. So we provide that service as well. We have forty-eight family foster homes. And then you can see we have some corporate foster homes. So those are homes like, and adult corporate homes, those are homes like C-C-R-I in our community, M-C-R-S Solutions. They have what's called corporate foster care sites for both adults and children. We license those sites on behalf of the state. So that's a lot of the work that David Holman does.
Rhonda, last year, we had a discussion on those foster care homes, a shortage in the community. Have we been able to up the amount? Or with the number of children that are unduplicated going down, has that helped ease that pinch as well?
Well, both of those things have, the, you know, obviously, the less kids we have to place, hopefully, that lessens the demand. But however, family foster home is always our, aside from relatives, is always our first hope that if we can keep kids in the community. So we do definitely have a need for family foster homes. You know, adolescence is always tough and we have a need for that as well. So I think most of our foster homes are fairly full, so we definitely do have a need. Okay, I'll move along to Adult Services. This is Pat Boyer's unit. This unit handles all of the chemical health, mental health, adult protection areas. And I won't go over all of this information, but this unit had a little over two thousand intakes in 2017. And those are all kinds of intakes as well. It might be a phone call from an individual who maybe has a parent that needs to go into a nursing home. So they're processing through our, with our intake, what are the steps for that to happen? It might be, maybe a family member that has a disability. And so they're inquiring about services to help keep the person in the home. It might be somebody calling concerned about their loved one who has a chemical health issue or that, a mental health issue. So our intake works through all of those things, helps to get them to the right, either community resource or if it's a resource that we have, that, that will work through those, those calls with folks. The biggest piece, and you heard me talk last year, well, I wouldn't say the biggest piece, but an area that does use a lot of taxpayer levy is our civil commitments. So last year, they screened one hundred and seventy-six referrals for petitions for civil commitment. And we pursued civil commitment on sixty-six of those folks. This is that service area, if you remember, the county has a share when folks go into state-operated services. And, and they change the share that, once the person doesn't meet that level, county has to pay a hundred percent, like at fourteen and up to eighteen hundred dollars a day. So we really were hit in 2016. Surprisingly, in 2017, we did really well, but now 2018 is not starting also good. So it's the, that service area that's very unpredictable.
Rhonda, because of the hit that that, that imposes on counties, has the Association of Minnesota Counties been active in pursuing the legislation to change that?
Yes, very much. In fact, again, this year, we have a legislative position to change that county share going back to the twenty percent that we had. The one thing that did happen the last legislative session is, there was legislation that moved the money that counties pay when the individual doesn't meet level of care. It used to just go into the general fund. They, they've moved that money out of the general fund and created an opportunity for counties to apply for grants in order to address the folks that ended up, end up needing to go into state-operated services. We applied for that grant. That was that Mental Health Innovation Funds. And our region did not get the funds, which is very frustrating. So we're going to keep trying for those funds as they open up in the future, but.
Did they go to the population center? Like, did the cities absorb most of that?
Um, you know, they haven't, and actually, we haven't actually gotten a, a letter yet saying we didn't get it. But it, that will be coming in May, so we don't have the details of actually who got the funds yet. But we haven't heard, so we're assuming we didn't get the money. Alright.
Who do you say is, is it?
Um, you know, it's, I'm not exactly sure. It's DHS folks that went to the Department of Human Services for these funds. But they actually have, the way they talked about it, is a, a panel that decides. Some folks outside of DHS in, involved in that process as well. So, we will definitely, once we get that formal letter, be following up with what factors did they consider in not selecting our proposal? So that we can, you know, look at that for future. But we submitted a regional grant, our, our whole region for, we thought we had a really great proposal. So I, I just think, you know, they had a lot of proposals and not a lot of funds to, so. So just to move along, this unit also does all of the chemical health evaluations. One of the things we did change this year is, they opened up, they started on Wednesday mornings doing walk-ins for chemical health assessments. And that has really helped, because we do have a fair number of no-shows for our chemical health assessments. They, they get scheduled and normally, the worker will schedule an hour and a half to, to do those evaluations. And then you get a no-show. But then we have a waiting list for people that want to get in. So we decided to try a walk-in process on Wednesday mornings and it really has worked out well. We get a number of people that walk in and, so I think it's, was a good change to do that. And then we also are, this unit also handles all of the adult protection, so vulnerable adult reports. They screened over four hundred reports last year and conducted over one hundred and forty-eight assessments. So those would be things like adult maltreatment, financial exploitation. We see a lot of financial exploitation referrals. Maybe self-care concerns, where somebody is reporting concerns about an elderly person living in the community that doesn't seem to be able to care for themselves or meet their needs. So those are a lot of reports that this unit gets. Alright, Disability Services. This is Holly's unit. They manage all kinds of what's called Medicaid waivers for folks with disabilities. So you can see, there's a number of programs that folks are eligible for. And these are folks that, it could be maybe somebody with a significant physical disability that needs support living independently in their home. It might be children living in their parental homes that need additional support and they qualify for these programs. So, all kinds. It's, most of the waivers are for people who are at risk of a nursing home. People who are at risk of a, what's called an intermediate care facility for developmental disabilities or individuals at risk of group homes. So there's quite a process for eligibility for these programs. They come in, they have a, almost a six to eight-hour screening process that goes, that's what that Min Choices Assessment is. And so this unit manages all of those waiver programs. Okay? So I'm going to go kind of fast, because I know we're short of time. This is Financial Assistance Unit, is Larry's unit. You can see all of the state and federal programs that that unit manages. And I just plugged in there with red, some of the, so you can kind of see the volume of folks that we serve in our community. Our, our cash grant programs is M-FIP, DWP, General Assistance, Minnesota Supplemental AA Group Residential Housing. So you can kind of see the number of folks that are served in each of those programs. Some individuals, for example, with the first one, M-FIP, that is for families, low-income families. So we had three hundred and forty-five families that were served in 2017. Now, those families may also be receiving SNAP, the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program. So those numbers are, and medical assistance, so they are counted in those three categories. So you'll see on the right-hand side, under medical assistance, we have seven thousand, three hundred and sixty-eight medical assistance cases representing a little over thirteen thousand adults and children receiving medical in our county, so. Out of all of these programs, the last one, county-funded burials, that one is straight county levy dollars. So we spent, last year, we spent about a hundred and twenty thousand on county-funded burials. So that's county levy, levy dollars. Up at the top on the right-hand side, childcare. The county does have a little over a fifty-five thousand dollar share in childcare. However, we earn a little bit of revenue, so it nets about thirty-five thousand that the county contributes to childcare. The rest of these programs, in terms of the dollars that go out to the recipients, is either state or federal.
Okay. I just got a question on the medical assistance.
Yeah.
When you're looking at thirteen thousand adult children, how often are those cases reviewed? I mean, you must have a heck of a.
Yeah.
Staff to review.
Yeah, we have a lot of staff that are reviewed, that are attributed to medical assistance right now just because of all of the changeover with MinSure and the healthcare programs. They are, I think they're reviewed, well, anytime there's a change, folks are required to submit updated information. And then I want to say, every six months. So anytime there's a change, and then they have, have to submit monthly household report forms. And then every six months, they have a formal, a formal review of their eligibility. I'm hoping I don't have that confused with some other programs, but that's what I'm recalling, so.
And so that six-month household report would include income?
Yes, yeah, job changes and, yeah, yeah.
Commissioner Campbell?
Rhonda, do all, do all of the people that are on MA, do they, do they all have to go through the county or do some go directly through the state?
They can apply directly through the MinSure Met System. But then, you know, we manage that.
They still get counted in our numbers?
Yes, yes.
Even though, going to Commissioner Gross's question, some of them might have, actually do most of it on their own by going through with the state? Because it is a state program, right?
Yes, yeah, yeah, yeah. But that is still in quite a, our staff still probably touch, I want to say, almost every one of those right now. Hopefully, that can change.
That's almost one in four people in our county.
Yeah, it's a lot.
Yes.
So, okay, Child Support Fraud and Collections Unit is.
Two seconds, did you have?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, just one more question, that medical, is that number up or is that number down? Did that miss something?
For medical assistance?
Yeah, like thirteen thousand or seventeen?
So, this other report I have is by cases. So in, for example, in 2016, we had seven thousand, two hundred and fifty. So it is up a bit from 2016. Twenty fifteen, we had seven thousand, one hundred and ninety-two. So it's been inching up, yeah.
Can I just, one more follow-up question too, if you're redone?
Yeah, well, I'm just thinking, you know, I mean, Clay County is one of the fourth fastest-growing counties and it looks like medical assistance is out and out.
But two, it's also deceiving, the one in four is not one in four adults, it's one in four in the population, which is the majority of which is probably children.
Right, right. It's, it's, um, this report didn't break it out adults and children, but that data would be available to, to break it out for adults and children. Some of the folks that are on medical assistance or on what's, for children, is on their, what's called the TEFRA. So for example, the parents, maybe their income, so for example, a child with a disability may be living in their parental home. The parents have to pay up to a threshold, just like a deductible. And so medical assistance doesn't kick in until maybe they've paid, depending on their income and, until they've paid that level. Then medical assistance will pick, come and pick up the remainder, remainder costs for kids with disabilities, for sure. So that's, there's different kinds of eligibility for medical assistance. This includes all of our folks in nursing homes, all of our folks in residential housing programs that need medical assistance. All of our kids that go into foster care, after thirty days, become eligible for medical assistance to help us make sure that their medical needs are taken care of. Some of that is secondary to private insurance as well, but, so. So some of these folks, they do have private insurance, but then MA pays, pays the premiums. It's called cost-effective health insurance. So there's different avenues to be on MA and different levels of, of fees that folks might have. If that makes sense.
That may have just answered my question, because the, the, you mentioned that those who apply for MinSure fall under this category of medical assistance.
Yeah.
And so those who apply for, through MinSure, they're trying to get the most affordable healthcare plan they can.
Correct.
Through that, going through that process, correct? So, so even though we're saying that they're getting medical assistance, just, you just said it yourself, there's some degree that they're, they have to pay what they can.
Yes, some of them may, yep. Mm-hmm, yep.
Okay.
It's important to clarify.
Yeah.
Well, I, I, it's, yeah, it's not a free lunch for everybody. It's something that's.
Oh, absolutely, right, absolutely, yep. Okay, Child Support Fraud and collections. Child Support Fraud and Collections, this is Sandy's unit. They have three primary responsibilities in terms of establishing and collecting child support. They work with welfare fraud and then they have a collections function. So, just to highlight in RED for 2017, this particular unit collected over $7.5 million for children in our, in our county in the form of child support payments. So they're, they're pretty busy in that, that unit, and that's one of the primary functions of the staff. Our welfare fraud, we had 358 referrals for welfare fraud. And through those investigations, they look at, the data that they look at is if fraud was determined and payments went out, so maybe for example, maybe an MFP payment went out to a family and they determined that fraud occurred in the application or the family didn't report something correctly. The direct savings has been a little over $137,000 that they've been able to, to recoup from fraud payments. The second piece is what they call cost avoidance. So, if an application has been made and they determine that something doesn't quite seem right and it was referred to our fraud unit, before a benefit even goes out, they were able to stop it because of finding something on the application that wasn't right. So that's the cost. They avoided benefits going out in that amount, 412, a little over 412, I don't know. So, and then we made 34 referrals to the county attorney's office for consideration for charges in fraud situations. So they work with Jenny's staff quite a bit. Our collections officers, they collect debt on behalf of the county. And for 2017, they collected over $862,000. A lot, a good chunk of this is for our auto home placements. So for example, for collecting SSI payments that children are getting who are in auto home care, we collect that to help us offset the cost of placements, child support payments as well, medical assistance, recoupsments. So, a variety of different areas they work on in terms of collecting debt for the county. So, that is very good as well. Okay. Then we'll go on to, I wanted to just highlight for you that right now the State Department of Human Services has six outcomes and, let's see, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10 performance measures that we are, that they're looking at for counties. The last two outcomes, outcomes five and six, they don't have performance measures yet, but these first four outcomes they do. And so I wanted to just show you what those measures were, what the threshold is, and how we did on the most recent 2017 report. You can see on the first one, Measure One, we were just shy of the threshold. However, we, if, if you do not meet the threshold, then counties have to develop a performance improvement plan. We did not have to develop one in this particular service area because some of the data we argued was not correct and they agreed with us. And so hopefully our next report will, will meet that threshold. But really what they're looking for is when we get a report of a child and we substantiate that maltreatment occurred, they're looking to see, we don't wanna have repeat reports of maltreatment on children because that tells us what is our intervention, what are we doing, what are we missing? And so they're measuring that. So it's really an appropriate and a good measure. So you can see the measures that we have. The other one that we did not meet is Outcome Two, Measure One, percent of current child support paid. Now, we were at 72.67%. Many counties struggle with this particular performance measure, especially counties that border other states. Because we have interstate issues when it comes to child support payments. So, we might have a non-custodial parent in North Dakota and we're trying to enforce an order for payment or vice versa. And we run into difficulties when we're dealing with multi-state orders and jurisdictions. And so, we continue to work on that measure with the state. And Sandy continues to be on top of strategies that we can take in order to, to impact that. But, and the rest of the measures, we did meet. And so, throughout the, the year, they'll be taking a couple of these measures now coming up in May and looking at our data. And then this summer they'll look at a couple measures and throughout the year they look at them to see how we're doing. Two measures that are, are separate from those that do have funding tied to them is two child protection measures. And I'm really happy to report that we met both of those performance standards and as a result, received an additional $101,000 that was determined here in March. So, that is, they're looking at in child protection. When we get a report, are we screening it within statutory timelines and going out and making our face-to-face visits within the statutory timelines? And we've met that standard. And then the second one is, when we have children in auto home placement, are we getting out there to see those kids at a minimum once a month face-to-face? And we met that standard as well. So, we're happy about that. Summary, you've seen this chart before. This is, where did, where did we spend things in 2017? So you'll see the first, first three bar graphs are all of our administrative areas, so income maintenance, child support, and then social service administrative areas. And then you can see across the board in terms of kind of our service categories, children's services and mental health, to no surprise, are our biggest areas. So that's where our auto home placements fall, and then our mental health services. So, you can kinda see where most of those end up. Now for 2017, on the next slide with our revenues, you'll notice that we brought in 21.7 million in revenues and then we spent 21.3 million in expenditures. So we did end up, our year-end for 2017, we were a little over 350,000 revenues over expenditures, which is really good because in 2016, I think we were about 600 short. So we were able to, to put some funds back into those reserves. It, it might be, if you just looked at revenues in isolation of expenditures, you might say, well gee, we, the reason is because we got more revenues. But it's really not the case. When you go through the 35 pages of the budget, you'll, you'll see we've got some revenue areas that we did really well in, some not so well. Many of them kinda evened out. We had some expenditures, some underspending in some of our expenditures that, that helped out as well. So it really was a combination of some increased revenues and some decreased expenditures that made that difference for 2017. Okay. The last part, I knew we were to talk a little bit about fee schedules and I was not wanting to, these would all require some further discussion, but you can see that the service areas where we do charge fees and what the current fees are. And we've done some talking internally and I've been collecting regional fees to kinda see how we compare. There are some areas that we can make some adjustments and, over the next couple months, I will be coming back to you with a couple of these for consideration. There are some areas that we could consider increasing if the board desires. So...
Well, thank you for that.
Yes, so. Sorry, I went over my time.
No, that's okay. This is a lot of departments, so it's important. Does anyone have questions for Rhonda on the presentation?
No, just thank you. It was a really important...
Yeah.
I, I did wanna say, Rhonda, you did, you always do a really good job with trying to educate us on this very complex department of yours. And I thank you for providing this detailed information.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thanks too. Your department really kind of reaches out into a multitude of different areas. And I know over the past year, you've really been instrumental in some of the discussions and how your department can kinda help facilitate some of our needs. You were really active with the behavioral health in the jail and now we're having some juvenile center discussions, so thank you for that.
Yeah, you're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. All right. Okay, we're a little behind, but the next is the appointments, reappointments for the two watershed district managers from the Wild Rice. I think Dwayne and Mark are both here, if you'd like to come up here. And two, I guess I should ask if there's anyone else in the audience that's interested in, in interview for the watershed as well. You're welcome to come up, so. All right, well, good morning.
Good morning.
We have in our packets from both of you, your interest to serve on the watershed as manager in capacity again. Correct? And I know that you've been quite active with attending Wild Rice meetings. I don't know, Frank, if you have anything you'd like to say?
Well, I would. I, I do attend most of the meetings. I missed last month's meeting with you, but I'm really happy to report that these two guys are very active in the Wild Rice watershed. And I don't know, you're welcome to ask them questions and stuff like that, but I fully recommend that these two guys stay on there. And I'm just happy that you guys did reapply for being on there. And thank you so much for your service, if you come.
Thank you.
I will also say that over the course of the year, because of my involvement with Buffalo RED, I've heard great things about your involvement. And Mark, I know you and I have had several conversations in terms of flood issues and what you've seen on the north end of the county. And so I appreciate how active you both have been in advocating for Clay County up there. Any questions for them?
Well, I've questioned them both before and supported them before, and I guess I have no reason to not suggest that they are doing a good job. Are we doing these one at a time?
Yeah, I do see that we have a resolution from Becker County recommending the appointment of Dwayne Erickson to another term. So...
I'll, I'll make a motion that Dwayne be reappointed to the watershed board.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Gross.
Second.
And a second from Commissioner Campbell. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
I'll also make a motion that Mark be appointed to the Wild Rice watershed board.
Okay, we have a motion to approve Mark Harless to the watershed board.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Well, thank you.
Probably you want some comment you wanna...
It's been a pleasant surprise actually being on the board. It's an interesting board. It's a good discussion, lots of different viewpoints. And as you go forward, you know, down the road, it's important to keep balance on that board. So I appreciate the opportunity to provide some of that from our part of the county. So I appreciate that. That's an important facet of that.
Well, we really appreciate it because we know that water issues are oftentimes contested and I think you present a calm presence there and so we appreciate that. Anything else? Well, good luck. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you. This was too easy, to be honest with you.
What would you like us to make it harder?
Were you expecting a test today or what?
I thought something would quiz me kinda hard, so I...
Yeah, you're used to the watershed meetings.
I would like one thing. I think as, as our appointed board members, we need your input when we go to meetings to get your focus. You appointed us, help us.
Yeah.
I appreciate it.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for your service.
Thanks.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mark.
All right. Our number four item is the approval to apply for grant funds for community living infrastructure. Pat Boyer and Rhonda again, good morning.
All right. Thank you. Back up again. That got us on track maybe. Okay, in your board packet, you received a summary of the grant that we are hoping to apply for. The, you know, as you may suspect, when grant opportunities come out, the term of time is quite short. And that was, that certainly is the case in this one too. As we looked at it and decided to move forward, then we're up against timeframe. So this grant application is due on Monday, the 23rd. And we're still, you know, vetting through the RFP and pulling everything together. So don't actually have the grant application here to, for your review, but wanted to summarize what we're hoping to do. So this is a grant through the Minnesota Department of Human Services. And the target is for the development of what they've called community living infrastructure to support folks with disabilities who are homeless, who are, have housing instability, or for folks that are living in institutional settings who need to or want to relocate back to the home community and in-home setting. So that's the target population that we're looking at here. The funds will be made available, for this application, it'll be a 12-month period from June 2018 to June of 2019. And then there will be options for reapplying on an annual basis. The total funds available are 1.4 million for 2018 and 2019, and then it'll increase to 1.5 annually after that. The application that we are looking at is to cover 10 counties, so our nine-county regions plus Wadena. The application would list Clay County as the fiscal host of the grant funds. And then the proposal would be that we would contract with Clay County HRA for the, the program management. Clay County HRA would be looking to enter into subcontracts with the three community action agencies covering those 10 counties, so Lakes and Prairies, West Central, and Mahuvi, Ottawa, community action agencies. So it's kind of a multi-10-county, multi-provider partnership. The funds are targeting toward outreach activities for folks who are homeless, unstably housed, or wanting to relocate, housing resource specialists, and then funding for counties and collaboratives for administering the housing support program. So we would be focusing on those three areas. At this point, we would, the proposal is for four outreach specialists to cover the 10-county area and 1.5 human resource specialists to, again, cover the 10-county area. So far, we, we are anticipating the grant request to be around 450,000. Through communications with DHS, that, you know, they're kind of encouraging applicants to, to request what they need. Likely, it may be pared down at that point if we were to be considered a, I don't know that we generally get everything we're asking for, but they may give us some guidance and we would maybe have to do some paring down at that point. But, there is no match with this particular grant. However, we will be building in, you know, in-kind things that we're already probably doing that wouldn't necessarily be additional costs to the county or the other counties involved. We will build in the grant some administrative funds for our, for our tasks in terms of being the fiscal host to the grant. So, that is our proposal at this point. We'll be vetting through this and submitting it on Monday. If we are selected, the next step then is I would be coming back before you, for you to give final approval of accepting the grant. So, if there was anything that changed between now and then that would cause the board concern, we could certainly not accept the grant at that point too, if there was concern. But, any comments from the board? Commissioner Campbell?
Who, who would be the hiring agency for these?
So the Lakes and, the community action agencies would be hiring outreach workers. So the proposal was looking at Lakes and Prairies hiring two, Mahuvi, Ottawa one, and West Central one. And then the Clay County HRA would be hiring the 1.5 housing resource specialists. One of the things that I, as, as we were reading through this grant application, the lens that I was looking at was with our jail, the re-integrating, the RAP program, I would really like to see us connecting some of these resources to our RAP program. So folks that are preparing to, to get out of incarceration, that we can address housing... get out of incarceration, that we can address housing and homeless issues. The other thing is when I look at the number of folks that enter into our detox that are logged as homeless, I think that's a population we really need to be looking at and targeting and trying to look at housing situations. So this grant also, the issue we've been dealing with, with our folks that go into state-operated programs that are now ready for discharge and we're struggling with finding housing options for them, there are folks that are leaving prison and we're having difficulty with housing options. I would see this grant as some of those activities helping in those areas that we're struggling with already, so.
Madam Chair, no. I was just going to comment that Rhonda and I had had some discussion about this and we could have further discussion if it was, because we, remember we talked about when there's added personnel that we need to look at all of the IT issues and things that we lost the county more money and maybe find that if you guys approved applying for the grant and the grant received.
Yeah, we wouldn't be employing any staff. Actually, some of the work that Pat does for the housing support program and Larry Young in our incoming units unit, we're going to build into the grant a little bit of funds for some of the work that they do because Pat and Larry will be a little involved with some of the other counties in our region in training on some of the housing support work that we're doing. So we, that's one of the pieces we'll be building in, but otherwise in terms of employing staff, we would not be doing that.
Well, it's a large grant. My hope is that because of the collaboration in the 10 counties, it would make us more favorable to receive something like that. It definitely does, the work that the grant would pay for would help us on the county levy dollars for sure.
Does it do that or is the purpose to help identify these people?
To identify and then hook up for services, help them apply for services that they're eligible for, help them to, you know, folks that we identify in our community to, part of the process is looking at what are their resources and supports and it might be helping them to relocate back to a community where maybe their family is that can help them in terms of their stability and stability in housing and maybe other services. So, you know, the effect, you know, we hope the effect that if, the more that we can impact folks that are homeless or instably housed, the less they are relying on some of the other services that are tax levy dollars like detox, like mental health, state-operated services, like incarceration. So they, not only will be working on housing, but they will connect them to other service providers, clinical health, mental health, disability services, all of those things that help people stay stable and not need deeper-end, high-cost services.
Very good.
What are the board's wishes?
I'd make the motion to reapply for this grant.
All right, we have a motion to approve the application for grant funds.
I will second it. So we are filling out this application as a, on behalf of the regional group?
Yes, so the application will come from Clay County and so we'll be the fiscal entity for the grant, but we're listing the service region as 10 counties and so we're receiving the funds on behalf of the 10 counties. So all of the other nine counties are bringing this to their board as well.
That was my question.
Yes. And they, most of them have supplied letters of support and then they're bringing it to their board as well.
So we have a motion and a second for the approval to apply. Any further questions, discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, good luck.
Thank you.
Thanks for the collaboration as well. All right, Missy Becker Cook from West Central Minnesota and Community Action. We were talking about you just now. You were? Yeah. With this housing piece. Good morning.
Good morning. Thanks for having me. So I'm just going to pass out our annual report that we just have completed and I like to come around and do an update to counties that we provide services to. So Clay County, we provide services in the form of energy assistance as well as our weatherization program. And so Clay County, last, just this last heating season, we served 1,904 households and with a million, $100,000, just under 100,000. So 1,904 households and 1.1 million is what was provided in direct payments for Clay County. So Clay County, we are, we have a seven-county area for energy assistance and weatherization activities. Clay County is by far our largest, almost double in sizes to Douglas County as our second-largest county. So, and then weatherization, conservation improvement programs, so housing rehab stuff was about $150,000. And then an additional $100,000 was spent on furnace repair, replacement or exchanges. So I'd just like to come and do a little county update and see if any of you have questions. You know, we work real closely with Lakes and Prairies Community Action, which is just right across the road and we have an office over at the Clay County Family Service Center for our energy assistance program, so.
Does anyone have any questions for Missy? Make it easy, Annie. Thank you for your presence. I know that in years where we have extended cold seasons, I'm sure the need is continual and great, so as seen by the amount of people in Clay County that use this, thank you. Can you, just for the public, this is not just a Morehead people receive this, it's county-wide?
Yep, it's county-wide, that's correct. And it can be owners or renters that receive energy assistance. We can't help if it's like subsidized, if their rent is, heat is included in rent and that kind of thing, we can't do, but, yep.
I'm confused about how does this, is this a separate jurisdiction from Lakes and Prairies?
Yeah, that's a good question. So there are 26 community action agencies in the state of Minnesota.
Yes.
And many years ago, in fact, it was my first job at West Central was that I was in charge of the weatherization and energy assistance program in Clay County. And so it was like 27, 28 years ago, Lakes and Prairies stopped doing the energy assistance program and housing programs. And so that was when West Central acquired those programs, so we've been operating them for about 27 to 28 years, I'm guessing.
Okay.
So, yeah, that's a good question though.
And two, it should be important to note, community actions across the state have different areas that they specifically do. Not every community action works on the site program.
Okay.
And because there was such a need in Clay County, it was something that West Central has continued to do and it's part of collaboration.
Many years ago, probably 35 years ago, energy assistance was operated by the counties. And then counties kind of turned that over to caps. I think there's maybe two counties left in the state that still operate energy assistance. I think Todd might be one of them and I'm not sure the other. Ottertail County did use to operate their own and now that has went to Mahouli, Ottawa, Community Action.
Did you have a question, Commissioner?
Do these payments go to the people or do the payments go to the gas provider or whatever?
That's a good question. Correct. Yeah, the payments go directly to the vendor of choice for the applicant. So of course, Morehead Public Service is a big vendor in this area and we did struggle a little bit in the beginning of the year with getting a vendor agreement signed.
Have we figured that out?
We're working on it. We work hard on that with Morehead Public Service.
If you need us to help you advocate for that, I think that's, we'd be happy to do that. Because I think to be able to keep the billing to go right from you to the...
If a vendor would choose not to sign a vendor agreement with us, then the money goes directly to the client and we cannot ensure that they pay their electric bill or their fuel delivery. And that's not what we want to do, that's not what the state wants to do. The state director, state commissioner, Bill Grant, and I worked real hard this fall on getting a vendor agreement signed with MPS. It was very challenging. They didn't, you know, and we, it seems not in their best interest to not sign it because their payments come directly to them, not to the client.
But even from the consumer's perspective, if you can't pay your electric bill because you have a negative balance in your account and then that money goes right to them and it gets absorbed by bank fees, that's a disservice to them as well. So I mean, it's not in their best interest.
No. And one of the issues with Morehead Public Service is, Morehead Public Service does electric, garbage and water.
Right.
So one of the things that has been a challenge is if they, if a client has a negative balance on their garbage and we make a payment for their electric bill, they just apply it to the whole thing, which is not okay with the state of Minnesota. They don't, they want that just to go for heating, not for your garbage or not for your water. So that's been a bit of a challenge and I think, you know, their computer system has not really allowed them to divide that out, is my understanding.
Uh, Commissioner Gross?
What incentives is there there? I mean, if you're going to pay my heating bill, I apply to you and you pay my heating bill, do I have an incentive to save heat or whatever? I mean, do we look at their place and say, well, your windows are leaking or whatever? I mean...
Yeah, that's a good question. And that's where our weatherization, conservation improvements come in, conservation improvement programs come in. So that's where I talked about, so we spend like another $150,000 in air sealing, weather stripping, insulation with our weatherization program to make those homes more energy efficient so the heat isn't going out the...
So do we check the homes when they apply for, when they apply for heating assistance? Do we check the home then say, well...
If they are eligible for heating assistance, they automatically get put on our weatherization list, okay? We don't get nearly the funds, you know, 1.1 million versus 150,000 in weatherization. We don't get near the dollar amount to fix up homes that we get in energy assistance. So we're working on that.
But there's a, there's a education component.
There is an education component and we do conservation things like low-flow shower heads, fluorescent light bulbs, those kinds of things too.
Commissioner Haney?
I'm just curious about what dollar amount is going into the public service in Morehead from your agency?
That's a really good question of which I'm not capable of answering at the moment. Of the 1.1 million, you are wondering how much goes to MPS?
Yes, I am.
What's the percentage, do you know the percentage of the number?
I don't, but I could get that for you.
Yeah, why don't you get that for us?
I'll get that for you and I'll email it to you, is that okay Jenny?
Yep.
Thank you.
You know, I think it's 80%.
I think you should, I think, I don't, I think you should send it to Brian.
Okay.
She can't forward stuff to us all together, so it has to be...
Okay, so Brian heard.
Yes.
It has to be this Brian dot in.
Thank you.
It's a very high percent. I bet it's 80, it's 80%.
That's just in Clay County, right? Yeah.
No, that's 80% of this million dollars Morehead Public Service.
Yeah, for Clay County.
Yeah, it's a very large amount, yeah.
Any other questions?
I will get that for you.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
Yeah, thanks for, thanks for seeing me and letting me come and give you our annual report and we want to continue operating this program, energy assistance statewide. The applications are down and I want to leave that because people are doing better.
I do want to say, I know that both your representation from West Central and Lakes and Prairies were out in Washington DC advocating for federal dollars, continued CSBG funding for this, so I appreciate your presence legislatively, not only state but nationally, so thank you.
And I appreciate you Jenny, you've worked great with community action agencies and our agency as well as Lakes and Prairies and it's great to have an advocate on our side, so thank you very much.
Thanks. All right. Apparently there's some personnel action at the...
Well, we're...
Thank you. No, thank you. Well, to say that I, we knew this was coming, but I'll let you take it away, Brian.
Okay, thank you Madam Chair. Good morning, other commissioners. I'll just leap into this, I've tried to keep it somewhat brief, but I wanted it to be meaningful as well. So this is my letter of resignation and my retirement. I say, dear Commissioners, October 16th, 1972 is the day I proudly began serving the state, with the State Patrol. I then continued my career as United States Marshal, as Becker County Administrator, and lastly, as Clay County Administrator. This fall would have been 46 years in public service. What a ride, it's been fantastic. Thank you for allowing me the privilege of serving our citizens with this very important position. My time working in Clay County has been a rewarding experience. Not only do I have the privilege of working for a great board, but it has been so rewarding to work with such a great group of department heads and staff. And Jenny over here and Colleen on your right side have been just fantastic to work with. Everything we have accomplished has come with an attitude, and this is a little quirky, I know it's not a direct quote, but it's an attitude of our former President John F. Kennedy, ask not what my county can do for us, but what can we do to further help Clay County? This attitude is amongst you and your employees and it is catchy, embrace it and expand on it. As I promised, I'm submitting my letter of retirement today to you and ask for your approval. My final day will be August 17th, but utilizing some vacation days, I will have completed work by the end of July. To you, our current Commissioners, to former Commissioners Waller, Everett and Ingersoll, thank you again for this great opportunity to serve. All of you have been responsive, supportive, involved and have directed a bright path for Clay County. To Commissioner Whalen, without your encouragement to apply, and he's not here today, I would have not experienced this great last run. So thank you and good luck.
Well, I'm not going to speak for the entire board, but thank you. I know that we've known that your retirement was on the horizon, so we've told you several times how thankful we've been for your presence in Clay County and your leadership, specifically with a number of big projects that are going on, but I guess if the board has any comments, I'll open it up. Everyone's gut-checked.
No, it's just, I think you should be so proud of your service that you've done to the county, well, and to the state, all those years you spent with the state, you know, but just the last 10 years with the county, I think, with our county is, you can be so proud of what you've done. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah, Brian, there's been, there's been two county administrators since I've served as county board member and when VJ left, he had some qualities that were really good and it was understanding us five Commissioners and our role that we are here as the voice of the people and our duties are to watch over all of what you administer. And both of you and VJ took that role very seriously. And it's, it's nice to see how, I'll use the word collaboration, between our administrator, our county board and our staff has been, worked so well in Clay County. I am proud as a board member to not have had many internal real struggles or arguments with other county board members or department heads or individuals. And that falls primarily, well, but on your lap because you've done a really good job in terms of, there's two sides to things. There's the side that we as administrators overlook and then there's the wants and needs of the people who are, who do the work. And... the wants and needs of the people who are, who do the work. And we have to find some common solutions and balance there. And you've done a tremendous job in providing that balance. And I, I think the people of our county, I certainly think they're very proud of you for what you've done. Over the last seven years, it's been mentioned that we're the, you know, fourth largest growing county in the state of Minnesota and that, you know what, we would much rather be growing than the alternative. And that all happens with good leadership. And Brian, thank you very much.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Well, Brian, I think, I grew up with a family that always treated everybody the same, no matter their walk in life. And that's something that I think you really live. I think, I've seen you treat citizens the same way as you treat CEOs. And I think that's why you do so well in the position and career path that you've chosen. And, and I appreciate the fact that we have an administrator who responds to constituents and residents in the community in the same, same manner that, like I said earlier, a CEO. So, we've been fortunate to share a small snippet of your career with you and look forward to your next step in life and retirement, but also we'll take your perspective and apply it as we search for your replacement. And as I've said in an interview earlier, that we hope that that will be an open experience and process and, and good dialogue with, with whatever we choose. And so I'll work with you in the next month to kind of formalize what that process will look like. So, I know that you're looking for some sort of approval for this from us.
So what happens if we do not?
Just got to stay for another 10 years.
We know that.
No, we, we need a motion with this own, like that motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Gross.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, regretfully.
Aye.
Oppose, motion passes. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you very much. It's been my pleasure. You guys have just done fantastic work to work with. And I've said that many, many times. It's just really an honor. And I thank you for that.
Thank you, Brian.
Well, we'll move into our committee reports. Commissioner Campbell?
Okay. Last, last week after, last Tuesday after a board meeting, we had a highway tracking committee meeting of which we discussed some permit fees. We talked about the Holly project. We talked a little bit about future Comstock project. And we talked about a, a truck complaint on CASA 3, which I asked for some follow-up meetings on that. Later that day, we went to Holly to meet with their city council and members there regarding the project that we have on our highway tracking, or our five-year plan, which is dealing with CASA 33 and Mill and Overlay project. And we were, we were there to discuss the cost share. We went over that with them. And I want to give a big thank you to Eric Hobbie for his work in preparing that and presenting that to the city of Holly. And and I think we've come to, together with a good, a good cost sharing plan. And I think an MOU is going to be coming to our board soon to further get that thing in, on the road to happening. And on Friday, I had a jail construction meeting. And again, it's going really well between our correctional facility and our LEC. Probably the biggest highlight that was talked about is that this, starting this week and into next week, we will, they will be putting in generators and which will then allow us to start using permanent power in both of those facilities. So that's a, based, and their major milestone that we're coming up on and showing how, how close we are getting to the reality of those facilities being up and running. I believe that's all I have.
Commissioner Haney.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On Thursday, I attended the Clay County Soil and Water Conservation District meeting. And we had the various reports and everything. And one of the interesting projects and as we heard about here at the board meeting recently is the Clay County Pollinator Project on the 7.72 acres of flood buyout property down by the combat road. And we heard various details about that program. And that was basically the whole program.
Thank you. Commissioner Gross.
And the two meetings that Commissioner Campbell already talked about, the highway tracking meeting I attended and also I attended the Holly meeting. In addition to that, last night I went to Keene Township, attended their meeting. A lot of discussion on rope maintenance. There, had some concerns concerning that. I'll take up with Dave and another thing that's really been, some of these, on some of the meetings I've been going to these townships, they really have a big interest in an open house on the jail, you know, Crown and Our Correctional Center. And I've been telling them that, I guess it is scheduled for July 24th. I mean, but they're also looking at tours of that place and they are, they are very interested in that. So I don't know how many tours are planned and doing, how long it's going to be. But there's a, I'd say I've been at five, six township meetings now and they're all very interested in doing that tour.
Commissioner Gross, I, I think that's, I think that's one of the entities that we've already made a verbal commitment to providing a, a tour for the Clay County Association of Townships.
Yeah, I, I think we have. I agree with that. But I don't know how many tours we got, but I'm saying that there's, there's an interest out there to take a tour of that place.
There is a plan for an invitation for them.
So, and I don't know how many we can handle or whatever, but. Okay, that's it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And last week I attended a full day of MetroCOC interviews for the new executive director. And that is second round will be next week. That concludes my reports. Brian?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, and, and just to follow a little more with, with the tours. In fact, we have a follow-up meeting. We've had one meeting with, and I finally learned how to pronounce that, didn't I, Madam Chair?
Never change.
Anyway, we do have a follow-up meeting with, to try to get some of the, the, oh, the statistics down, let's say, and looking at different groups. And we have a group that's meeting on that, includes the commissioners. And we'll work through that. But we're looking at kind of the week before that, inviting probably 30 different groups. And townships are certainly involved in that. And we'll, we'll make time for everyone that wants to attend from that level. They've been an important factor there. So.
I think as follow-up to, because there's so many Commissioner Gross groups like that, that when we talk about the week before the grand opening, that we actually will have the keys to the facility. And so we're actually setting that week aside to get all these people in there prior to that. Ribbon cutting and open house, so.
Yeah, I didn't know we were going to have a sign-up period of what, or how many can go on a tour at one time or whatever the case may be. But I just feel there's going to be big demand for it.
Yeah. Part, part of waiting till that, last week, the construction will pretty much be over. So we, we really will, we won't, we won't have to limit so much the amount of people that go in at one particular time either. For example, we might be able to take the entire group of township officers in one as opposed to breaking them into several groups. Because we won't have to interfere with the construction site. There won't need be the needs for the hard hats and vests and all that type of thing that goes on. So. But it will be, be before the facility is actually open.
Very good. And a couple of meetings I attended as well was highway tracking and the meeting at Holly and, and went really well. We were, we were really pleased with how the dialogue went there, I thought. Kirk and I had met last week before we went down to St. Paul to talk about some of the issues that we were going to be addressing down there. We, we did go to St. Paul, had just an extremely busy day visiting legislators. We, Kirk by himself visited with Representative Alva Hausman. I think she is the minority chair in the House. And she has the, she has the solid waste transfer station on her bonding list, which is very, very positive. Now we know there's going to be a lot more requests than there is money, but we're, we're going to keep knocking at the door in regards to that. Then we did meet with Burns and Mack in the Thursday morning to talk about the plans and the timing and all of those things down there. We met with then Representative Dean Erdahl, and I believe you guys met with him. He's the history buff there, Commissioner Haney. And we met with Representative Lean, Representative Mark Cork. We met with Senator Sandy Pappas. And she is the chair of the Senate, I'll say bonding bill on the minority side. And, and she was very, very supportive. Met with Senator Ekin. And we also then met with Dave Benke with the Minnesota Fusion Control Agency. And he assured us again that we're at the top of their list as top of priority projects. So it was all just very, very good. And we kept, and I, I shared this, I guess, with, with you guys, but the one thing that we said, what more can we do? What more can we do? What more can they do? And they said, keep hounding us. They said, come see us. Because every time there's another group, there will be 10 groups right behind you the same day. And what you want is that project pulled out and put back top of the pile again so that they keep it fresh in their mind. So I guess that's what our justice lobbyists do. And I'm not saying we are, but anyway. Another meeting I had with, was with Mark on the cameras is kind of a follow-up to your construction meeting on Friday because I was not there. And we'll be talking about that and bringing it to the board for discussion very, very soon on that. So. Darren and I had a meeting yesterday on some policy issues. And we didn't have our community facility meeting yesterday afternoon. So I did attend the Clay County Law Enforcement, kind of their annual spaghetti feed last night. So I got out for that. And Madam Chair, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Commissioner Campbell?
Hey, I forgot to mention one thing too. We did have a lunch meeting last Friday with construction engineers and our architects on the Juvenile Center project to basically make plans for the presentation that's going to go before the West Central Regional Group this Thursday. So it's kind of a follow-up to what we as a board approve for the, the price of the construction project and the bonding.
All right. Anything else? If not, just an item of note, next week after our meeting, the majority of this board will be attending the Greater FMEDC Annual Meeting at the Hilton in Fargo. All right. If nothing else, we are adjourned.